You may recall, it's been about five years, four and a half, something like that. One of the first things that I've brought to the table to address was the ISO system, ISO ratings with communities, and 911's part in that. I will present some numbers to you Wednesday that should be of concern from a scoring standpoint. I've now been through two ISO inspections in the last six years, and we've got a serious problem with 911. It's not changing, they're not addressing anything. I've offered to walk them through that process years ago, and there's some things we could do that would help every single individual in this county if they would do their job and focus on that compliance guidelines. It saves everybody insurance money, every business, every person. This isn't just about Kansas or me. We dropped our rating fortunately another point, but it wasn't because of anything we got out of 911. And we could have dropped another point had they done their job. And I'll present those numbers Wednesday at the meeting.
That's the rating you're calling out like the fire department gets them.
There's three categories. One is your fire department with their equipment and their training. The other one is your community water supply and their hydrants and testing and capacity. And the third one is telecommunications with, is all 911. Those three categories all have a subcategory breakdown of compliance. They give each area a score, and that score gets compiled together, and then they give your department a rating, one through nine. Lower the rating, the better. It helps everybody in the county.
Like insurance?
Property insurance. When we went from a nine to a seven, it saved the average homeowner $165 a year on property insurance. We've dropped now to a six, but there's communities out here that could easily drop a point or two if we just fix the communication side of it, and that's thousands of dollars to businesses and to property owners.
I know some of the things you have to do for a fire department, like prove you have ability to get so much water and such.
Flow capacity, post-testing, pump testing.
What are you talking about, 911?
They have a whole list of guidelines that if they meet these, the criteria, nationally standard.
Same thing as the.
You bet.
Are you going to provide us with that list?
Be happy to. I'll give you a copy of the actual rating that we got, but the 911 portion is going to be the same if Crissman goes through it. They're going to take 911's data that they've already got and say, here's the score you get for the telecommunications side of it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Committee reports?
Budget-wise, you all have a copy of the current budget year. We have approximately 16.67% of the year at the end of this month. With the last payroll added in, we'll be at 12.1%, roughly. Income is always legs behind. Our income right now, we've got approximately $79,000 coming in from the state for various funds, and, but we're still only at about 8% of the budget. So we're about halfway where we should be, but that's not surprising. Are there any, while you're looking over, if there's any questions, let me know. On finance, Deana Hassler would like to meet with the finance committee at some point relatively soon. She has some concerns and questions that she'd like to talk about as far as her budget. So we'll set something up along those lines as soon as it's possible. Carl, we'll talk to Carl and Alan, and we'll set something up. Regarding that also, it is not too early to start thinking about clearing up some of the issues on health insurance. They're at least starting to deal with those issues, seeing that we're going to be moving in negotiations and other things. And I didn't know whether Ellen's committee, I'm not on that anymore, but we need to move forward with maybe clarifying, we're seeing where we want to wind up being this year, maybe even simplifying what we're trying to do for everybody. And that's only my opinion, okay?
Clearing up health insurance policies?
Yes. And how we're going to approach it for the coming year. I mean, it's not too early to start figuring. We don't want to be sitting around and negotiating, and we've got to tie it all together. And we need to get some parity or equity built into the system somehow. I'm not saying we haven't done a good job so far, but in the future, we've got to be, we've got to look to the future. Also, along those lines, I got a, Sarah, not Sarah, her mother, Lisa, Sarah's my son's age. And anyway, she called, she wants a meeting between Jeff and myself on prisoner healthcare costs. They would like to discuss how we're going to move forward. They asked me to get ahold of the sheriff. I'm going to stop by the office after, afterwards.
Who are you talking about?
The hospital.
Hospital.
Oh, Sarah Ellis.
Oh.
Lisa Ellis works at the hospital. I keep mixing the names up, sorry.
She's talking to you a couple times.
Right, and isn't she on the board? Is that what you mean, work? She used to do the.
She was a place around Tops at the hospital.
She used to be the.
Tension.
Home, the.
Four-H.
Four-H leader.
Well, now she's at the hospital, and she's patient accounts manager.
Or Lisa, from Crissman.
Your Lauren helped her with this, and she's the patient accounts manager, is her title at the hospital. In any rate, what I'm trying to say is I want to let you know what's going on, so in case somebody else wants to do it, or what, I just want you to know that.
What's her concern?
They want to, let's see, during, let's see, inmates' visits have been covered and billed under Medicare and cost assumed by the hospital. I think what they're angling at is they'd want to know how we're going to handle responsibility for inmate expenses incurred at the hospital and family med center. These were billed Medicare rates. So she wants to talk to Jeff and myself as chairman of the finance committee and find out what's going on. And we're both in the dark about how it's been handled this past couple of years, so.
Stake kicks in some of that, don't they?
Yes, but we need to find out where we're at, and Jeff needs to know, and he needs to make some decisions, and then whenever we find out, we're going to have to bring it back to you folks if there's, if it's simple, which I doubt.
What kind of expenses are we talking about? I was under the impression that we have a policy that if they want to go to the hospital, they pay for it, for inmates.
That's what I understand at this point, but.
Some of them are on Medicaid.
Right, and it says that, Medicare and Medicaid.
That's the problem. Self-insurance is all right, because they can build through, prison can build through its insurance, but Medicaid and Medicare is a problem. They said there's, I talked to Lisa, there's like $5,000 unpaid bills out there, but the problem was, and we have never seen a bill.
No, we have never got a bill.
The sheriff's group is one of those complaining about it.
Well, we don't see that bill.
That's right. We don't see that. But how come we pay a bill if we don't get the bill first?
Anyway, we need to find out what the questions are, and we may not know what the answers are until we all get together and figure it out. Ben?
We had one time using, I guess I don't understand what we're doing. We was using a nurse from the health department at one time to do whatever was done. We're not doing that anymore, or it's still.
Well, I think there's emergency services.
You still have to do a screening, so maybe.
Yeah.
And I think every month, every week, the nurse comes up and get her, but this is something that the nurse can't take care of, where they have to go out there.
If somebody gets split their head open, they got to go out to emergency room, or.
I imagine that deals with also, they're wanting us to accept responsibility for prisoners' costs, that the state or federal is not picking up.
Basically.
It's like they're losing some money to go.
Well, and I don't see us picking up the gap on Medicare or Medicaid if there's an issue there. I mean, but at any rate, we need to find out.
We need to find out what they're talking about.
Right, and Jeff needs to understand, because Jeff says, I don't understand all this stuff.
Well, I hope I does, because it's not been brought up.
So at any rate, I won't let you know what's going on, and I'm, after I leave the meeting today, I'm going to go up and show this to Jeff, and they've given us several different dates that we could meet, and we'll do it sooner than later, and then we'll go from there. The airport tonight, I guess you see that we have several things on the agenda for the regular meeting as far as having authorized the chairman to sign some grant applications. So they're all there for you to take a look at, and I think some of you have had them in the past, so the airport board is going to review them tonight also, but they're pretty straightforward. You can see that they've aligned the project slightly different. And at this point, the gas fuel portion of what we're after is not in the current mix for the first project. The repair of the taxiways and runways and all that is in there first, okay? It's not that the other's been abandoned, it's just because of the issues that we have at the airport, they've reprioritized. However, we are exploring the possibility of what it would take to have at least some kind of a system out there to take credit cards. You know, it may not be the ideal system, but if it can be fraud-free and give us an opportunity to have that type of business without issues, then we should try to do it.
What do you mean, like a.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, and that way, it becomes less rigorous. Obviously, we're going to have to have some communication system in order to read it out on a data basis, but we'll have it, it'll be direct deposit and all that other stuff, so, but that's what we're looking at, okay? And that's all I have at this point, unless somebody has a question. Alan?
Carl?
Mike? Me neither.
Animal shelter meeting at noon today.
Tomorrow.
No, Monday. I thought we started on Sunday.
I thought we put those on Tuesday.
Seriously. I don't know. We'll meet.
Well, what does the agenda say, more importantly, the meeting notice?
I checked.
That might want to check that.
I checked down the door.
I was thinking, did I change the codes? Do you have all these other meetings?
Yeah, I just talked to Andrew. We did decide to have one every three months. I'll check with it. I thought it was today, because she posted the door out of the crackman building.
I had it down for tomorrow at 10, that's why I was curious.
I can't do it at 10 tomorrow anymore.
Well, that's cool.
I drive for dialysis tomorrow. We'll get one soon.
We got it posted.
It's posted, yeah. Health department, we do have our committee, our decided, we have Don McNair as the new member.
That's the recommendation?
Yes, recommendation. It's quite hard to find volunteers anywhere, but also I checked with a person in town on the heating and cooling system. Now, if the health department, they said be willing to bid on it, but I just thought I'd pass that out to him, so, unless we get to spec.
Augie, would it be possible, do you see Mr. Bob Wilson on a regular basis? Would you, and I think, we looked at the temperature, and the crackman building is too low. We need to get it up around 60 or 65. Okay, on cold, cold days, if you keep it at 40, you run the risk of, and we appreciate his approach, but we'd feel more comfortable if it was up around 65, okay?
So it's at 40 now?
Yeah, that's according to.
Between 40 and 50, it was colder than last time.
Right, it was cold last time. So like when we turn it up to 62, have him stay around there for a while and see what's all frozen?
Yes.
You'd like it at 65?
No.
60.
60 or 65.
62, you're building.
Ben says it should be more at a normal temperature, okay? Because on these cold, cold days, if you've only got a 40 in there and you've got some walls, you're not going to get the protection.
Well, if you have meetings like we have, it should be a little on that, that's the whole thing. Time gets warm, the meetings over anyways.
If you've got power out, it's at 40 degrees, you don't have very long.
It's like your babies go faster. It went fast last time, 10 minutes, wasn't it?
Have to bring a life vest to me.
Anything else?
No. I'll check on the, well, we got a meeting today since it's been posted in the open news. I realize we're teed today, another senior moment.
Yeah, you know, Carl was checking out, remember that now? If it's on, that's great, it's already posted and stuff.
Yeah, she posted it there. At least I'll go check.
Augie?
I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but we're working on the personnel policy that addresses the elected officials not participating in the health plan. Mark has that, and I've gone back and dug through the archives for the last 30, 40 years trying to locate documents, and I have found some, and so it's upstairs and Mark's looking at it. That's why it's not on the agenda, but it soon will be. Questions in your board packet? I've tried to give you everything with the exception of the drainage ditch. That's just a simple.
Hit on those, did somebody tell me one other time that you get those from a recommendation for the other?
Yes.
Other people who are on that drainage ditch?
Or they're just a reappointment to.
Yes.
Do you use that too yet?
They come from the various attorneys for that drainage ditch, and then that, those trustees nominate who they want to be on there.
As part of their process, they nominate who's going to be on there, and then they present it to us.
Yeah, right. Augie, don't forget, you and the chairman need to come up, or somebody needs to come up with the assessors board. We need to get that squared away, new appointment. We need a Democrat. And right then, the makeup of the board is two Republicans and one Democrat, and it should be two Democrats and one Republican. So in the past, I know when Keller did it, he just asked the Republicans on the board to find out what Republican they want, so.
Why did Democratic caucus?
Because Jeff won. Because Jeff won.
It's the highest vote getter.
Oh, the highest vote getter, not the, because I was going to say Deana's not, she's an appointed fit.
Right.
That has to be done before the, that group meets.
So you can.
They probably, they meet in the wintertime sun.
That's why I thought.
Yeah, we need to take care of.
So we're meeting caucus, let them find out, all the rest of the county board members. Okay, I got you, boss.
So Mr. Zubor will have a list for us to pitch out by Wednesday morning.
Okay, car thing.
Ben and I will work on it.
Yes, we'll do that.
Anyway, I just want to make sure they can slip through.
Where's the, the one that's going off is located in northern Hennepin County.
We assume.
Well, they do, the way they, unless, they did it by seniority in the past.
Well, I thought we talked, and we said we'd ask the senior first if they wanted to stay or if they wanted to go, and then, then that kind of decides. Somebody to leave that doesn't want to leave when somebody else does, so.
Yes.
But is that your, is that your recommendation or your call to try to come into the board on that position?
Try to get, right. Can you say, try to get somebody from the same area, and I guess.
Yeah, oh, I see what you, yes, yes, that.
Even should, or should know whether, you said other one, whether they want to serve.
But is that ultimately your, your call to make that recommendation to the whole board?
Yes. But what Keller in the past did was ask us to come up with somebody, and then he recommended it to the full board.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, even on the other two, that's still be his recommendation to the board, I think that should be from the Republicans saying, is that right? That's what I was getting at.
I was just using standard past operating procedure.
Which we all know was right.
I wonder, I mean, that's kind of what I was, I've never heard you really say all that was so good, so I just forgot if that was really what we're supposed to take place. I didn't know.
Well, we always, in the past, I shouldn't have changed it, here that law.
I got something else.
Okay. Pink slips.
Pink slips. You asked me to remind you about the grant for the jail, and I was in an hour getting my coffee this morning. I don't know if Eric brought that up or not.
No. You got any others, and then I'll take that up.
That is the only thing that you asked me to remind you of.
Okay, you don't have anything else? I'll add to that if you don't.
No, I think that's all I have.
No, there's grant money available for, maybe, from the federal, I believe, that you might be able to use to, A, repair the jail, B, build a new jail, and C, and Aaron asked me if, I was interested in exploring that, and I said, sure, I think you might have been in, maybe, in his office. Anyway, he's put his land acquisition guy, what's his name?
Oh, Paul.
Yes. He's checking into it, and he actually got a meeting with the lady in champagne. He said, hey, that sounds great, we need to come down and look at your jail and see. The catch is, it's, there's always a catch, and there's a matching fund, I don't know if it's a 50-50 or, but it's certainly something we need to look into.
Do you know who the grantor is?
Yes, but I don't have to hear, yes, I'm, it's, I don't have the paper, but I was, I guess I, Aaron might love that. If you'd like him to give us the dissertation, we could get him in here, or Howard.
Why don't we wait till they go meet with the folks, and then we'll have more information? I mean, that's.
Yeah, or, yeah, people on the, on the sheriff's committee would probably be interested, maybe, in being at the jail when this person comes to visit and talk about what they've got.
One thing on the board review is maybe the statute, is there anything in the statute that says how that person is picked, you know, who, how that's worked?
We'll look.
They might specifically say how that's being.
I mean, who gets terminated and who gets.
The process.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I do have something else, I forgot.
Okay.
I knew there was one more thing. Couple weeks ago, there was a high up in the 1544th Transportation Company who delivered a large, real nice print, framed print, and I have, I took a picture of it. I guess I'll send it around if you'd like to see it. And it is to commemorate all of the 1544th, but specifically those who, those who perished in Desert Storm, and they, they just dropped it off and said, if you could place this somewhere, it's really nice. And then there's a small little plaque that has the names of those that died in service. And I have spoken with Ben and Jeff, the sheriff, and they both saw no issue with that. I'm trying to find the picture, I'm sorry.
It's in your office?
It is in my office.
Will you take a look at it Wednesday?
You can certainly feel free to come by and take a look at, I have it here. It's a nice looking picture, and then there's a smaller thing that hangs. We've already, we've located a place outside of my office on that wall next to.
John's.
Yeah, next to John's, and might be appropriate place, so encourage you to come by and take a look at that, I do have it in my office.
Ben, is that something we have to vote on?
No.
Okay.
He brought it by and said, in all the courthouses in the area, they're just donating that, and just, as a memorial and a tribute, and he said, most places are just putting it up in their courthouse.
Sure.
So, looked like a nice gesture.
Since Edward County lost a person there?
Yes.
There was an ad in the paper about secretary's position to the sheriff's office, is that a new position, did somebody resign?
No, that's a, Vicki's going to be retiring.
Yeah, Vicki's going to retire in October, and Jeff has indicated he would like to put somebody to work with her for a while, so, because it's not something they can learn in 15 minutes. She's retiring when?
I think October, I thought it was earlier than that.
Saying if you're going to send someone now, that's paying for salary for 10 months. I haven't talked to Sheriff.
That's how it was built into the budget, but we'll have to, we'll have to discuss that.
Anything else? On your agenda on item 13, we're appointing everybody on the Board of Health, because we looked and couldn't find where they were appointed when they should have been. So we're appointing them actually for the rest of their term, had they been appointed. Like, for instance, you'll see, some of them are only appointed until July of this year, and then the others are appointed for July of next year.
And that, this came from Janet.
Are they historically a one-year apart, or some of them are two-years apart?
This is by state statute, that's it. And also the amount of them is by state. Except Dan's is only a two-year term. The county board member's only a two-year term because the new chairman can put whoever they want, is the fact.
Right.
Anybody got anything else? Reason for a closed session?
I got one question, I just saw voting centers, is that all the same?
Yes, there's no changes.
No changes.
Right.
I know there was some talk about maybe making some changes, you know, it's like, I know there was concern up at Shiloh and, you know, moving to the community center.
Right. Those are on, those are all, that's up to review after this election. I mean, it would be too late now to do anything.
But that's something you're going to look into?
Yes, sir.
Before the next big election?
Yes, sir.
That, and maybe some other places, you know?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's several election items that will be coming up for discussion and approval.
Does that go on from the standpoint of the school, trying to get them out of schools, Augie?
Well, well, yes and no. In addition to, yes, and, but some of the schools have, have given me an alternative. And, but yet, the statute says you shall use schools so much as.
Since you can use them.
It's so much as.
Yes, you can.
As you can.
They don't have, the school doesn't have an option.
I know, but, but.
Yes.
We don't have to.
Right, that's right, and that's what I'm trying to do.
Yes, right.
My goal, my goal is to get them out of the schools, because it is a disruption to their, to their school day. And I've had some schools give me an alternative. to their, to their school day. And I've had some schools give me an alternative, and, but I can't just change one without the other. And so my, my plan is to call a meeting with all the superintendents in the county and sit down and discuss the idea, and hopefully we can come up with a win-win situation. You know, there's, well, like, the Buck Township Garage, that's a, that's not a very fun place to conduct an election. And, but I don't know where to go. Sims Township is another one. It's dark, it's cold, you gotta go to the outhouse. And somebody suggested using the, the volunteer fire department there on Route One in Oliver. I'd be, so there's a lot to look at.
And, you know, actually, naturally, I'm a little bit concerned about that, especially I look at the number ones we have inside of Paris. And I even look at like, you know, what, which one with our, with our building that we have on the north end. I don't know if that's good, bad, or different. I don't know how that can be worked. I don't know how it can't be worked. I, I just keep looking at that building, especially now since I'm playing around with buildings. I, I don't know if that's ever a possibility, but it'd be great if we could ever use something.
I have, I have several ideas that are on the ground. But for right now, these, these are, are, yeah, the same. There's no change there. We just need to officially adopt those.
Lot of other locations you'll probably have to stay for. You know, other, other than schools, there's no.
Sometimes if you have township, building, so, if you have other things that may provide you, or other people may, may give you things, and I understand what you're saying, I guess I'm just looking at it from a, from a school standpoint. That was really nice to the state of Illinois, said, yeah, you can have schools.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah.
If you move it out of one school, then you're saying you have to move it out of all the schools.
Well, there's no, there's no law there, but out, out of respect.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
And courtesy, that, that's the way I wanna approach it.
I see, yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm all about getting them out of the schools if I can. Good question. There'll be more to come on that.
Anything else? I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I'm gonna, see if she's posted that, and then I'll call you if it's.
It's also, yeah, you're gonna hand it off to you.